The League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization, encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The goal of the League of Women Voters of the United States is to empower citizens to shape better communities worldwide.
Welcome to today's candidate forum, brought to you by the League of Women Voters of the Midland area and Midland Community Television, or MCTV. You will be hearing from the candidates for Midland County Board of Commissioners, District 6. I am Kim Stanky, President of the League of Women Voters of the Midland area. The League is a nonpartisan organization that works at the national, state, and local levels. Membership in the League is open to people of all ages, 16 and over, both men and women. We are committed to the informed and active participation of citizens in government, and we neither support or oppose candidates. We always welcome new members. Information about joining the League is available on our website, or you can ask any League member about us. Here's an overview of how today's program will run. We will start out with an introduction of the candidates running for the office and give each candidate two minutes for an opening statement. After each has given an opening statement, I'll pose questions to which each will be asked to respond. Each candidate will be allowed an initial response to each question, again, up to two minutes in length, as well as a reply after both have had an opportunity to give initial responses. Replies will be limited in length to one minute per candidate. The candidates have participated in a coin toss to determine who will be the first speaker. That order will be rotated in response to questions throughout the forum. Following the question and answer period, each candidate will have an opportunity to make a one-minute closing statement. Jane Worth, who is here with me, is our official timer. Jane will raise a warning card when the speaker has 30 seconds, then at 15 seconds, and when it is time to stop, she'll give you the red flag, and I will allow you to continue to the completion of a sentence. So, let's get started with the candidates for the county commissioner representing District 6. The candidates vying for this seat are Republican incumbent Eric Dorian and Democrat challenger Brandon Sims. So, down to business. Eric, having won the toss, you will go first with your opening statement, so take it away.
Well, thank you, Kim, for this opportunity to be with you all this afternoon. As many of you know, I'm Eric Dorian. I'm Commissioner of District 6 on the Board of County Commissioners. I was born in Midland, educated by Midland Public Schools, received a Bachelor of Science in Education from Central Michigan University. I've been a Commissioner since June 15th of 2012, when I was appointed to serve the remainder of the late Commissioner Jim Bradley's term. Since then, I've been elected four times by the people of the sixth district. I am Chairman of the Human Services Committee, and I currently serve on the Administration and Operations Committee as well. I had previously served on the Finance Committee, as well as the now-defunct Law and Justice Committee. I will also be a member of the Management Bargaining Committee to the Road Patrol Deputies Association, whose agreement is due to expire December 31st of this year. I have subcommittee assignments to the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board, the Juvenile Care Center Advisory Board, and the Midland County Employee Safety Committee. I also serve as an alternate on the Local Emergency Planning Committee, which previously I was a subcommittee member too. I also am an alternate on the Parks and Recreation Committee. I am in the process of completing 20 years of service in the United States House of Representatives as a constituent representative to Congressman John Molinar for the past six years, and previously to Congressman Dave Camp for 14 years, which of course, the congressional district has always included all of Midland. My duties there included interfacing with Department of Veterans Affairs and Department of Defense, as well as any other constituents who call our office. I've lived in my current address, 3207 Dawn, for 15 years. I know my neighbors, I know my neighborhood, I know my community, and I'm thankful for the privilege to serve the people of the sixth district. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Brandon, you get the next two minutes.
All right. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. I think this is a great service to our community, especially when we're talking about local candidates like myself and Commissioner Dorian. I think it's great to have the ability for us to talk about our platforms and what we support. A little bit about myself. My name is Brandon Sims. I'm a longtime Michigan resident. I've lived in Midland combined for a decade now. My academic background, I studied Industrial and Operations Engineering at the University of Michigan. After graduating, I followed in my father's footsteps and came to Midland to work for Dow. I've worked at Dow since 2015 in various roles in supply chain. I started doing continuous improvement work, working in the plant in Midland, doing lean and Six Sigma-type activities to try to find ways to improve the efficiency of the site logistics operations. And in my role that I'm currently in, I work on the information technology side of our supply chain planning operations. And so, I have a strong background in computer science, a strong background in improvement engineering, and those are skills that I hope to be able to bring to our county board. So, I think I'll...
Thank you, Brandon. Now, let's begin hearing the answers to questions that the members of the Midland League believe will be of interest to voters. I'll let you know when it's your turn to answer each question. Also, I will repeat a question for anyone who asks. Brandon, we'll take your response first to the following question. What do you consider the chief priorities of county government? And what do you consider to be the top priorities facing the commissioners in the coming term?
So, I think that the chief priority of our county government is serving the residents of the county. And the way that our county board can do that is through operating our county resources efficiently, effectively, and responsibly. I think that when we think about all the services that our county provides, sometimes they're not always as visible as maybe the city government is, or even the state government, but they're nonetheless very important. You know, thinking about our courts, our jail, Sheriff's Department, Parks and Recreation, you know, all these services, and there's many more, you know, play an important role in our lives. And, you know, I think it's very important that we continue to serve the residents of Midland County as best as we can and as efficiently as we can. It's no secret that the county budget is very finite. There's not a ton of ability to, you know, we can't print money. And so, it's important to do the services that, or to have the services that the county government performs be done in an efficient manner so that the, you know, the county residents have the best services available. You know? So, I guess in conclusion, it's really the chief priority is serving the residents of the county.
Okay, thank you. Eric, what is your response to this first question? I'm sorry, what is...
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you repeat what you just asked me, Kim?
Yes. What do you consider the chief priorities of county government? And what do you consider to be the top priorities facing the commissioners in the coming term?
Okay. Well, I mean, some of this is boilerplate language, and forgive me for reading to you, but the mission of the Midland County Board of Commissioners is to protect the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the community and our employees. The board will demonstrate fiscal responsibility, maintain credibility, and build public trust, assume leadership in the development and/or improvement of county services and the programs that promote the economic excellence of the county. The board will provide for the delivery of essential services through cooperative interaction with all county-elected officials and all the other units of government. The chief, the main, our biggest goal, and this is always going to be a goal, this is always our challenge, is that we have a stagnant tax base, coupled with people expect a level of service out of Midland County. And it's always trying to, how are we going to keep this level of service that people expect with the fact that we're not getting any more money through our tax base, unfortunately?
Okay. Thank you. Brandon, you have one minute to respond to this question. As a response. So, Brandon, do you want to take a minute?
It will take a minute, but I'll just say that, you know, I agree with what Commissioner Dorian said. You know, we have our challenges when we have our flat property tax base, and, you know, obviously, state revenue sharing hasn't been great in recent years, and so, but, there we go.
Eric, you want to take advantage of the one minute allotted for your reply?
No, I yield back the minute. I don't understand why we're having, while Brandon got to answer first and then he gets to rebuttal what I've commented on what I said. I shouldn't, I don't understand that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I just, I wasn't, I didn't have the rules down. But it's fine. Hopefully, we can edit this part out.
We want to make sure we give you both an opportunity to respond to something that is said by the front speaker.
Sure.
Okay. Number two. And Eric, I believe this question goes to you first. Do you support funding the County Connections Service? Please explain your answer, or what is your position on funding the County Connections Services in general?
Did you start the question with "do I support"?
Yes. Do you support the funding for the County Connections Service?
Yes, absolutely. That is money that comes from the U.S. Department of Transportation, and the county is simply a path to that organization that does just an absolutely fabulous job of getting people to and fro who have challenges, shall we say, getting to and fro. That's Lynn Knapp and Gary, who we just passed a measure that they're able to get two vans to be able to transport Midland County veterans to appointments either at Saginaw, or Detroit, or Ann Arbor. And I can tell you, as being the veterans rep for Congressman Camp for 10 years, transportation was always an issue because it's something that VA does not provide. It was organizations like Disabled American Veterans for people volunteering to take veterans to and fro appointments. And that has always been a challenge, getting, lining that up. Absolutely support County Connection. Thank you.
Brandon, you want to respond to the same question?
Yes. So, I, you know, the question of, do I support County Connection? The answer is absolutely. I think that it's a great service to our county, especially when we're thinking about how to support the residents in our county. Transportation is critical, you know? Getting people to work, to doctor's appointments, to whatever it is that they need to do is an important and viable service. It's something that maybe isn't the most visible county service that is out there, but I think that, absolutely. It's critically important.
So, Eric, is there anything else that you would like to add?
Sure. I just want to, I just wanted to, I didn't necessarily say that County Connection only serves veterans. Obviously, it serves anybody who calls them. It's a little transport them to and fro within the county, so. But the part with the veterans is just another part of their mission that we're very thankful that we have.
Thank you. Brandon, is there anything else on the topic?
No, I do not. Move on.
We'll proceed. You're next with question three. What would you do to prepare for the loss of county-operating tax revenue when the assessment reductions go into effect next year for the lakefront and lake-access properties?
That's, that's an excellent question. You know, our county government is going to have a tough couple of years coming up. You know, tax or revenue has been relatively flat recently, and expenses have been increasing. And unfortunately, that means that difficult decisions will have to be made. You know, with the assessment coming up, and, you know, unfortunately, we have these people, residents on Lake Sanford and Wixom Lake that have been negatively affected by this terrible flooding event. You know, I think it's great, or it's not great, but I think it's appropriate that the, you know, the new property tax values on those houses is adjusted appropriately. When we're thinking about how do we decide where to cut or increase taxes, you know, I think it's very important to go and talk to the people that are on the front line. So, talk to the different departments, talk to the different, talk to different municipalities to try to come up with collaborative solutions, and ultimately, ask for public input because the input from the public is important when, you know, we have this, with the Board of Commissioners deciding what to spend money on and where to cut back.
Okay, thank you. Eric, your chance at the question?
Well, you're right. With regard to assessments, will reset themselves December 31st of this year. Then it'll be, those properties will be reassessed. Fortunately, in Midland County, unlike Gladwin County, Gladwin County's really going to get hurt bad. Our tax base is not, is not that dependent on Sanford Lake residents. Now, it's been a horrible, and I was just up there and saw the damage there, which is just absolutely horrible. But fortunately, this county has an administrative controller who is top-notch in Bridget Grandston. She understands the numbers. She was an auditor. She was the financial director for years before she became an administrative control. We also have an excellent financial department at my birth, my parents. And between them and their, we'll work it out. I mean, this is the budget of this past year. Some interesting reading in here. Anyone has trouble sleeping at night. Nobody's talking about raising anybody's taxes. People, voters of Midland County would have to vote that upon themselves. So, let me just assure you that nobody's talking about raising anybody's taxes. If they want to, however, they can vote that upon themselves. But always tough decisions because this thing's got to bounce. And this is what I talked about, the level of service that people expect. That's all I have, Kim. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Brandon, is there anything else? We'll take the minute to discuss?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think that, you know, following up on Commissioner Dorian's comment about taxes, I agree. You know, Midland County has already some of the highest county taxes in the state. You know, I think that we should do everything that we can to keep taxes where they're at and not raise them. Obviously, the Board of Commissioners can't decide to raise taxes. It would have to be a proposal to the voters. But I think that we should try to look at, you know, what we can do when the budget's when we come with a shortfall instead of trying to raise taxes. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Eric, anything else on the subject?
Uh, no, I'm comfortable with my response. Thank you. We can move on.
Eric, you get the fourth question. Did you or would you have voted in favor of Enbridge Line 5 at the recent Commissioner meeting?
Kim, you need to repeat the first part of the question? I get what the question's about, but, I think...
Are you in favor of, did you vote in favor of the Enbridge Line 5 at the recent Commissioners meeting? And if so, explain.
Yes. They presented to us a, obviously, a Line 5 has been a political, a hot potato, shall we say, for a while. Clearly recognized that people are very concerned with the Great Lakes, maintaining that valuable resource. But I think after Enbridge did present to us, after being invited by one of the other commissioners, and they presented a, I think, a, the best solution possible, which is the tunnel that they are pining to safely transport that propane. I've never thought that shutting Line 5 down was viable. I understand that people are concerned about the environment and a potential disaster, but shutting Line 5 is not economically viable. So, I did support that.
Eric, you wish to reply? Or Brandon?
Brandon.
To reply to Commissioner Dorian for, to answer the question.
The question is, would you have supported the Enbridge Line 5 if you had been voting?
Okay, yeah. So, the answer is no. I would not have supported the resolution that was passed. I mean, I understand that our energy supply is very critical to our Midland County residents and to our state as a whole. But I do not believe that, looking at the facts, that the Line 5 tunnel is a critical part of our energy infrastructure. When we look at the history of Enbridge's conduct, we look at what happened in Marshall with the cow, was the oil spill. If we look at what happened in the UP, where it took, according to the state, or the Forest Department, took over 30 years for them to report an oil spill in the Western UP. You know, they haven't, in my opinion, shown that they are a responsible actor. So, that's why, you know, I question whether or not the, this oil pipeline that is in some sort suspended in the Straits of Mackinac should be continuing to operate. You know, I will say that, you know, I do think that building a tunnel is a viable solution. And I think that if we can come to an agreement where we are quickly, quickly decommissioning that line, that would be a great thing. But, you know, I think that I would not have supported that resolution.
Eric, you wish to reply?
Sure. I just want to let you all know again, they were invited by the board to present to the commission, and the resolution that we passed is nonbinding. Frankly, resolutions that come before the board, we don't, we really don't have any business getting involved in that. But we hosted their presentation, and they asked for a resolution, so we provided one. It's nonbinding. Thank you.
Governor makes the call. Brandon, is there anything else you'd like to say?
Just, I agree, you know, that in effect that the resolution that was passed, you know, doesn't have a large impact, right? This is largely a state issue and federal issue, and, you know, we don't have an Enbridge oil pipeline in our, in our county, which is, you know, one of the reasons why it was interesting to me that Enbridge came, but, but thank you.
All right. Next question, Brandon goes to you. Would you have voted for the various levies that include the cost of spraying for gypsy moth suppression, a contribution to county-wide transportation services, and a contribution to support programs and services to seniors in Midland County in 2021?
Okay. So, the answer is yes. Will we talk about the special millages that are put on the ballots by the county government? I think the vast majority of them are valuable services to our community, and I think that if they were not valuable to the residents as a whole, it's on the, you know, the community can say no. I think that's, that's one of the great things about special millages is that they're assigned to a specific purpose, and the residents have that say, to say, "No, I don't approve of this millage," or they do. And in the cases of the millages that you discussed, you know, I believe that they, you know, they've all been passed, or they all were approved in the past. And I would expect them to probably be approved by the residents in the future. You know, we're thinking about our services to seniors. I think that's, you know, it's great for our community that we can provide these services to people that are older, that may not be able to provide these services for themselves, whether it be meals or helping with maintaining their home, keeping them in their home. You know, I think it's really great. But overall, yes, I would support this.
Eric, I think you're next.
Well, it is correct in saying that the special millages are taxes that people do vote upon themselves. They, these categories, as well as the whole, and I'll read them, so you win. Two road, special taxes, senior citizens, 911, which is also Central Dispatch, EMS, which is the ambulance, transportation, ETC, mosquito, Pinecrest, gypsy moth, which you do a limit to, and the school resource officer, which was the most recent special tax that the people of Midland County said, "Yeah, we need this." So, yeah, absolutely, I support this. And I've always said, number one, people need to vote on this, to vote this upon themselves. This is not anything that the commission does. We do approve the language, however, when they come and ask us, "Hey, we're going to levy such and such on the already pre-approved." Most of those special millages are four years of length. However, Pinecrest has a 20-year lifetime on it, and we're already halfway through that, I believe. I think that was a '08 village that passed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Brandon, is there anything else you want to?
No. I, you know, I think, I largely agree with Commissioner Dorian, what he said.
Okay. Okay, with that, we're going to move to closing statements. We're gonna finish these, and these are one-minute closing statements. Candidates, again, for the district county commissioner and the sixth sixth district, and Eric, you will go first.
Sure, thank you. Uh the question for the voters of the sixth is a simple one. Do you want a commissioner who is a native Midlander? If the answer is yes, I'm your candidate. Do you want a commissioner who's been here for most of his life and has longstanding member of this community? If so, I'm your candidate. If you want a commissioner who already knows the job. And has been sworn to perform the duties of that job for the last eight years, I'm your candidate. Lastly, I thank the League of Women Voters for holding this forum and I ask for your vote on November third, thank you.
Thank you. Brandon?
All right, I again, you know, I I wanna thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum, you know, it's a valuable service. I hope that uh when voters think about who to vote for, um that they consider me. I have strong technological background, right now the board has seven Republicans and zero Democrats. I would be a a new fresh set of eyes to the county commission and provide a different perspective. Uh you know, we if we look at what's happened over the last seven years, we we can see that. Our our special millages are up forty percent, um you know, we pay some of the highest county taxes in the state, and I I think that. Uh ultimately, those are things that I want to help, uh you know, keep taxes where they are and improve a level of service, so I hope to earn your vote. This November and uh thank you again for watching.
Thank you. So, that's it, voters. Candidates for the sixth county commissioner district have given you a few of their views. We hope something said here today will help you in your vote voting decisions. And in closing, I wanna note that there are going to be uh two state proposals that you will see. As part of this um process that we went through today in the forum.
Statewide Proposal Twenty Dash One, Michigan Use of State and Local Park Funds Amendment. A proposed constitutional amendment to allow money from oil and gas mining on state-owned lands to continue to be collected and state funds. For land protection and creation and maintenance of parks, nature areas and public recreation facilities. And to describe how money in those state funds can be spent. Referred to the ballot by the legislature, this proposal would allow the state parks endowment fund to continue receiving money from sales of oil and gas. From state-owned lands to improve, maintain and purchase land for state parks and for fund administration. Until its balance reaches eight hundred million dollars. Require subsequent oil and gas revenues from state-owned lands to go into the Natural Resources Trust Fund. Require at least twenty percent of endowment fund annual spending to go towards state park improvement. Require at least twenty-five percent of trust fund annual spending to go toward parks and public recreation areas. And at least twenty-five percent towards land conservation. Statewide Proposal Twenty Dash Two, Michigan Search Warrant for Electronic Data Amendment. A proposed constitutional amendment to require a search warrant in order to access a person's electronic data or electronic communications. Referred to the ballot by the legislature, this proposed constitutional amendment would prohibit unreasonable searches. Or seizures of a person's electronic data or electronic communications. Require a search warrant to access a person's electronic data or electronic communications. Under the same conditions currently required for the government to obtain a search warrant to search a person's house or seize a person's things.
And with that, I wanna thank the candidates for participating in this forum. Even more important, a sincere thank you goes to the candidates for their willingness to serve as elected official. In these challenging times of governing. And to our listeners and viewers, thank you for your time and interest in watching this forum. Members of the League of Women Voters of the Midland Area sincerely hope. That what you've seen and heard on this program tonight will help you with your voting decisions. We believe it is vital that citizens demonstrate informed and active participation in our government. So please be sure and vote. For more information on candidates, on the candidates, please go to our vote four one one dot org. Online voter guide published by the League of Women Voters. Polls will open on Election Day, Tuesday, November third, run from seven AM to eight PM. If you are voting in person, be sure you know the location of your designated voting place and have your necessary ID with you. Absentee ballots are available for all registered voters in Michigan. You can submit an application at clerks' offices in the city and throughout Midland County. Absentee ballots will begin to be distributed on September twenty fourth. They must be returned to your clerk's office before the close of the polls on Tuesday, November third at eight PM. If you return your ballot by mail, use two stamps and mail it as early as possible. If you use a designated drop box for ballot return outside your clerk's office, be sure it's your clerk. If you have any questions on absentee voting or any other aspect of the election process. Please contact your clerk's office. Finally, I wanna extend a very special thank you to the people who have made this program possible. To our production manager and Zoom host, manager of MCTV, Matt Richardson. Production Director Matt Thomas, Production Specialist Chris Ferguson. And Administrative Assistant Mar- Mary Jo Kellogg. Thank you also to the following contributors from the League of Women Voters of the Midland Area. Voter Services Chair Sue McColister, The Timer Jane Worth, and Zoom Coordinator Catherine Redwa- Redwine. And remember, please vote on November third.